So there was like a trailer.
Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday October 3th of the meeting.
Councilmember Sloane.
Here.
Councilmember Murdoch.
Here.
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Here.
And Mayor Clacke.
Here. Councilmember Murdoch, he is in the flesh.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm here for a moment. Recently, Lake County lost a valuable friend in Thompson's office. So let's take a moment to honor that and think about those in your life that have been going through challenges. Thank you. Did Mayor Form any changes to the agenda for modification?
You.
Absolutely, the president is presenting.
I'll say it. A motion from Vice Mayor Overton, a second from Councilmember Sloane. Please move. All right.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. Item one, presentation of October's adoptable dogs.
Hello, everybody. So for this month's adoptable dog, we brought Romeo. He's a two-year-old German Shepherd mix. Romeo is very goofy and very playful. He loves to play tag and is very determined to not lose. He enjoys playing with toys of all sorts. Romeo has made many friends while being at the shelter and gets along great with male and female dogs. He's a quiet walker and is always ready for an adventure. Romeo is neutered, microchipped, hormone-tested, and up-to-date on all vaccines. Come meet Romeo and all his other fluffy friends waiting for their forever homes in our shelter. We're located at 6820 Old Highway 53, and we're open 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week. We hope to see you there.
You Romeo.
Thank you Romeo.
Yes, Romeo would like to do a show. Take him home. Mr. Mayor, council members attending. To our intake for the year to date has been 321 dogs. 273 dogs have gone through and left the shelter. Forty-nine to rescues, 199 returned to owners. Twenty-three have been adopted and two euthanized with a 98.67% release rate. Current shelter population is 54 dogs, which has 51 adult dogs and three puppies. 100 microchips have been done, 104 free vaccinations from clinics, 11 other vaccinations, 16 neuters, and 13 space.
So one thing I'm thinking is, is there a kind of maybe, and I'm not saying expedient or anything, that in the future that we could get a show of the dogs, like maybe for that month that's still there, because they've been there for 30 days. I think it would be nice if you just maybe showed some pictures, a slideshow of some pictures of the dogs that are still at the kennel, because not everybody can get down to the kennel, so maybe somebody could see it on TV.
Yeah, just saying, we've also been talking to our public relations people about figuring out ways to highlight it a little bit more like in the public address.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving on to item two, a presentation of a proclamation declaring October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds. And whereas emotional and physical scars resulting from domestic violence are often severe and low-lasting. And whereas in the past 12 months, Lake County law enforcement responded to over 480 incidents of domestic violence with the manual nature. In the past 12 months, the victim-witness division of the district attorney's office has served 405 victims of domestic violence. And the district attorney's office has prosecuted 243 felonies and misdemeanors, acts of domestic violence. Lake Family Resource Center responded to 935 crisis line calls, served victims, and additionally sheltered 127 domestic violence victims and their children for a total of 4,429 defendants. Whereas it is crucially important to hold perpetrators responsible for assault and to prevent domestic violence at every opportunity. Whereas family violence is a community problem. Stopping the cycle requires not only the strength and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all members of the community. And whereas many organizations such as the district attorney's office, the sheriff's office, Lakeport Police Department, Clearlake Police Department, and Lake Family Resource Center are committed to ending domestic violence in Lake County and provide essential crisis intervention and prevention services to all members of the community. Now therefore be proclaimed that this month of October 2024 is designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Clearlake. Our community is urged to support the efforts of the agencies assisting victims of domestic violence and to increase their involvement and efforts to prevent domestic violence. Thereby strengthening our community, creating an environment which honors, encourages, and protects all members of every day. Sign this day, pardon. Do we have someone? The Family Resource Center?
Hi, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for naming October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And then I just wanted to share that this year's theme through the Domestic Violence Awareness Project is Heal, Hold, and Center to embrace the many ways we can heal from violence and oppression, commit to holding space for survivors, and center those most marginalized in all our efforts to end domestic violence. This is an intentional pause and moment of recognition and togetherness for advocates and survivors across the country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three, a presentation of a proclamation declaring October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second-leading cause of death among women in the United States. Whereas each year it is estimated that more than 220,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and more than 400,000 will die as a result of the disease. Whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease. And whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection, and treatment. Whereas as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives of those lost to the disease. Whereas this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families and friends who are tires, who are a tireless source of love and encouragement and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Clearlake is hereby proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Clearlake. Sign this day, pardon. Me, Mayor Clacke. Do we have anyone here who is part of? Yeah, please, sir.
I'd just like to say to these member people, my daughter had breast cancer at a young age. And it was, the doctors kept telling her that she could, you know, that there was nothing wrong, that she was too young for breast cancer. I really encourage that if you feel, even no matter what age you are, you could be 16, you could be a baby. It doesn't make any difference. If you feel alone, make sure that that's taken care of. Lucky for her, she is a survivor of breast cancer, but it's only because we push for treatments and to clarify. So there is no age to breast cancer. And, you know, no matter how young you are, make sure that if you feel there's something wrong, make sure you go to the doctors and just have a check.
Sharing that best. Thank you for sharing that best, ma'am. All right, moving on to item F, public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter that is not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act of Limited Exceptions does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. And here in the chamber, please come forward, say your name, and you'll be limited to three minutes. If you are on Zoom, there is a chat feature where you can leave a comment, and the city clerk will read it after the folks here in chamber. Anyone here in chamber would like to make public comment? Oh.
Am I, am I good? Maybe I shouldn't ask those questions. I've messed up your microphone, though. We're just gonna let it do what it needs to do. I just want to come up and give you guys some kudos. I think that it's easy and often that you get complaints because people look to you to solve problems, but I want to give you kudos. I've been working with your code enforcement through the ABA. We've had a car that was out in Borax Lake. It's been there for far too long. But in working together with water resources and code enforcement, it is now gone, which is great for people to now drive by and recognize that it's not a normal thing. And I've also, there's times, time, I'm sure you do the same, I'll drive around town and I will smell things or I will see things that look improper in a residential area. And I'll submit those to code enforcement. And just this morning, I was told that they took care of that. And I just want to say thank you for doing the work that needs to be done and thankful for code enforcement to try to keep this city. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
I know I'm getting to be a familiar face. But if you're really complaining, I have a couple of suggestions. One step is getting the speed limit reduced in the avenues on the side streets. Since they've been chip sealed, the speed will go faster.
Can you lean over, the folks in back can hear you.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Like I say, I'd like to see the speed limit reduced in the avenues because since it's been chip sealed, people are driving way too fast, they did before. And we're looking at a disaster, especially in the intersections up there, that there's no control in the intersection. And, you know, when you have people traveling 40, 50 miles an hour down that, there, we're gonna have a major problem in that. That's one suggestion, see what we can do to get speed reduced. And the other here, I'm there to enforce code enforcement a bit. They have a big job and everything, and they need more financial resources so they can get in and get some of this cleaned up faster. Last time I was here, I was playing up next door. I know that they've been cited, I just talked to Officer Peterson a few times. But that is gonna cost more than what their monthly allotment is to have to clean that up. That's just step one. And there's two more places around me that I'd like to see have done, but this is worse. And that's my suggestion, that's, that's helping. The officer over here, the officer back there, so we can all enjoy the city more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Florrie, you have a public comment?
Will you state your name?
Anyone else in the chamber? Yes, but.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. LaBurne. I've been living here for 10 years now, and I just recently became a citizen, so I'll be voting. What has bugged me is I live in Clearlake Park, and I usually use Burns Valley Road to go to the store. And now that the new building is there with, I believe, senior citizens, it's leaving a busier street. It's not, by any means, a private road, but 1,400 some block is in horrible state. Holes over holes, and I have seen one of the people living there desperately trying to fix those holes, but it's not professionally done, so the next rain will wash it out again. I mean, there are holes this size and this deep at times. And he said, well, it's considered a private road, so the city's not taking care of it. If you put one of the strips down, I can tell you, you will see that this is no longer a private road, and it should be included in the care of the city.
Can you just, what was the name of the road again?
I beg your pardon?
What road are you speaking of?
Burns Valley Road, yes. It's just one block going around the corner, and it's, it's in miserable state. The beginning of it and the end of it is taken care of by the city, but this one block is like, it's nobody's child.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for making this work.
Yes, that is a part of the touchstone project. It's almost done.
Hold on, so it sounds like it should be addressed shortly here. It's part of our road plan going forward here, so. All right, any other comments here in the chamber?
I'm just gonna judge on what she just said.
Okay.
I'm just questioning the hole in the road by, like, if you're coming from the senior center going to Safeway. There's just a hole, and you forget to move because you're just gonna hit it. So, I mean, I don't wanna, I try to go to the right, but if you go to the left or the car's coming, you won't make it.
All right, thank you for making this work.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you all. I'll be right back. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member want to pull that item from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right, and I'll take your motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Public comment?
Apologies. Would anyone like to make a public comment on the agenda, or on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, anyone on Zoom?
No comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's bring it back and refresh their memory of that motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sloane, a second from Councilmember Kramer. Please vote in your board.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. Moving on to item 12, discussion and consideration of Resolution 2024-42 granting consent to the county of Lake to establish the Lake County Hospital Improvement District. Did Mayor Form?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sloane, you were called September 9th. You heard a presentation from Mr. Cass, the administrator of Clearlake, about the possibility of establishing a hospital improvement district in the county. So this is gonna move forward in the process, and Mr. Cass is here tonight to ask the council to approve this resolution. Consent to continue the process. Well, I'm sorry if you have any additional questions for him, because he had a lengthy presentation, and he has some of his team on Zoom if there are technical questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As Ms. Flor said, we're here looking for a resolution. When I was here previously, I shared that we would be going before the board, Lake County Board of Supervisors. We've done that. We're actually in the public opinion phase of that work, which there'll be another meeting on the 22nd of this month, and then we will meet again in front of the board on early in November. But in order to move our work forward, we seek a resolution from the city council to establish this new business improvement district.
Councilman Flora?
Just in case people weren't here to catch your previous presentation, could you provide a summary of what that entails and why the hospital is asking for this?
Absolutely. So this is, we are seeking additional reimbursement, in a sense, from the state of California to care for our Medicare, Medi-Cal patients, of which we care for a large percentage of Medi-Cal, both our hospital and Sutter in Lakeport. And so the state, without missing words, under-reimburses us. And so this is a way that we would be able to receive additional funding from them. We would pay an assessment, and that assessment would come back covering the assessment and then matching it out.
So it helps the hospital recover costs for treatments?
Exactly. It allows us to reinvest back into our infrastructure and support those programs that currently don't have a positive bottom line.
And this isn't, so to speak, a tax on your patients or the people that are living in our community?
No tax on anybody. No one will have an impact. It's not something like to pay our assessment, we're raising rates or doing something like that, everything stays neutral. And then we receive the matching funds.
I appreciate you, Governor. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, if you give us one moment, we'll open up for public comment. Anyone here in the chamber wanna make a public comment on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
I'll bring it back to council, Councilmember Kramer.
There are no other questions.
No, looks like you're good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-42, resolution of the city council in the city of Clearlake, state of California granting consent to the county of Lake and establish the Lake County Hospital Improvement District.
I'll say it. I have a motion from Councilmember Kramer, a second from Councilmember Sloane. Please vote in your board.
Want to get your money?
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item 13, an update on the Boles Fire. Did Mayor Form?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just wanted to give the council a number of updates around the Boles Fire, so. I'm sure y'all saw that Governor Newsom declared a state emergency for the Boles Fire on Sunday. This is important because it opens up funding to the California Disaster Assistance Act. There'll be some additional funding that the city and other agencies will have access to through this, but. But I have the most important part of that is helping those who have destroyed different homes with debris cleanup and funding for recovery. So we're, you know, very excited to see that that happened. A few other things. So this week, we did a debrief with a number of agencies involved in the Boles Fire, Cal Fire, California Hospital Emergency Services, Lake County Fire, various county agencies, Red Cross, Lake County Sheriff's Office, Office of Emergency Services, et cetera. Just a few things from that that I wanted to point out, follow up on. You know, overall, we discussed a handful of areas that there could be some improved coordination and communication, which always happens. But, you know, the general agreement from all the agencies, the overall response from everyone was good. And this one pretty involved, so that's awesome. I did want to talk just for a minute about evacuation plans. This came up before through some of the information that's been shared from candidates and others over the last week or so. There's been a little bit of misinformation. The city does have a number of evacuation plans in place, so that isn't something that needs to be created. There's evacuation maps for situations in various areas that the city already laid out. And the Genesis site, which used to be Zone Haven, which does the evacuation areas that are used by us and Lake County Sheriff's Office, whenever there's evacuation warnings or orders. It's important to note that when that happens and a order is released through that process, there is a link to the actual evacuation routes that's provided to folks in there. Now, Chief Hobbs has talked about maybe there's some ways that that can be highlighted a little bit more or maybe missed by folks. So we'll be working on ways to highlight that a little bit. And then we have done a little research on specifically sort of the gridlock and avenues exiting on Highway 53. So you're all aware, there's not a lot of exits from the avenues on the Highway 53. There's also been talk about we need to add more of them. That's not going to happen. Caltrans is not going to create more access points on Highway 53. Their goal is to eliminate some of the ones we have, just so everyone understands. But Caltrans employees responding, so the traffic signals did lose power. And we're just, they go into default red flashing mode until Caltrans comes and solves the generators to bring those back up, so they have battery backup and flashing. Of course, that doesn't help gridlock at all, right? And Caltrans did not want, they did not want Highway 53 blocked. But the way the pressure was relieved was one of our officers solved the issue, stopped doing what the rest of the police officers were doing, which is evacuating people from their homes, and did control access north and south on Highway 53 and get people out of there. So I just wanted to share that. I mean, we'll be looking at ways to perhaps prioritize that or make that happen a little bit quicker. But it was a recognized issue by one of our officers, and that's how we're going to keep that pressure.
It was recognized for that intuitive, because, just start doing that.
Officer Eagle. We also did an FMAG training. So this is, I didn't write out this acronym. So I don't remember exactly what it is right now. But this is, so this is something that, so I mentioned the California Disaster Assistance Act. So this is funding that kind of happens from the point of the incident through the recovery process, right? Resources for that. So an FMAG has to be declared during the active incident. And so this is federal assistance through FEMA that's provided for the firefighting effort itself and some of the emergency activities that happened during the incident period. So once the fire was determined to be fully contained, that ends the window for FMAG reimbursement. So Lake County Fire Protection District will have access to reimbursement through that. Now, just, it is important that we understand the processes around this. So like the cash fire, for example, an FMAG was not declared because it was not requested until after containment had already happened. And so we were much more diligent, careful this time that request happened, you know, earlier on. We're fortunate to be able to receive that. So city will also be eligible for some reimbursement through this program for our response, request for mutual aid. This is 75% of the cost. And the 25, remaining 25% will have to be borne by the city. So we haven't been through this process before. That's why Caloas came with their staff and gave agencies some training. So we're working through that. There is an initial form that has to, that we'll be filing tomorrow related to that. Lake County Fire will be directly an applicant as well as County of Lake, because there's various agencies or various departments at the county that will be eligible. And then also we're going to be working with County of Lake School District is the other one, kind of the transportation-related council that they came in and helped out for trying to transport people to shelters or something like that. So we're gonna have to work through whether they are kind of a subrecipient through the city, or they would also be able to apply directly themselves. Ms. Swanson and some others coordinated a local assistance center debrief today as well. I'm told that, you know, there was some suggestions for improvement on that, but there's significant issues, so that was good. Small Business Administration hours will be starting possibly next week. So they will be coming in and providing assistance to businesses that were impacted, homeowners that were impacted, providing various funding programs for rebuild. So it'll be good to get that going. We're also talking internally. We're starting to get questions from folks on, you know, how can they rebuild? And, you know, so I think we're probably gonna have a couple of workshops for these folks so that we can have our planning building staff here all in one place and other agencies that are part of that permitting process to help make it as easy as possible for them. So we'll be coordinating that in the coming weeks. Housing update. So as you know, North Coast Opportunities is handling the caseload for this. So the report from, I guess this was in the day yesterday. They're currently managing a caseload with nine families consisting of 14 individuals that are in hotel accommodations. And they're providing rental assistance with like initial deposits, things like that for five families currently. There's 74 initial applications that they're working through of their case management process for various things, not housing support. But, you know, they are in the process now of transitioning people out of hotels into other housing. So I think that's, that's working pretty well, and they're doing a good job now. There are a few folks that, you know, we still have contact information for everyone that has destroyed their home. We just had someone contact Ms. Swanson Sacramento that had kind of fallen through the cracks. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Swanson and others out there that, you know, please contact the city if there's legitimate needs there that we can help with. Just a special thank you to Melissa, who really cares so deeply about helping these folks. Just love seeing her. We're fortunate to have people like that working for the city. The Phase 1 hazardous household waste cleanup is completed last week. Only thing remaining there, they've had some issues over the years with lithium batteries that were pulled out, and there's a lot of lithium batteries out there. But even as much as 21 days after incident have, you know, been ignited for one reason or another. So those are being stored off-site at a secure place in special storage containers for a period of time. And once that's completed, those will be removed. Those are not being stored in the city limits. The watershed assessment team was here a few weeks ago. It sounds like they should be beginning their work sometime next week. And so they'll be bringing a team in primarily California Conservation Corps and putting in BNP's around the sites. And they want to try to get in for any rains to make sure that ash and other potentially hazardous things don't wash off into waterways. And then the Phase 2 debris cleanup, at this point, probably five to seven weeks for that to start. There needed to be a state declaration, which happened. And they have to go through some procurement process and do contracts for that. So we're kind of waiting on that at this point. I would say all of these things are happening much quicker than with the cash fire, which is good. I guess the last thing on this that I wanted to point out is in our municipal code for disaster like this, folks that have lost their homes, previous council has adopted an exemption for billing permit fees for 12 months after this for folks as long as they, you know, want to rebuild with the same footprint. Now, if they decide to double the size of their home, fees are being charged for that expansion. But I mean, that's still okay with the council. Just wanted to point that out. We'll be moving forward, helping all those folks under those rules unless further directed by the council. I think that's kind of the overview. We have an interesting question.
Thank you. I think you have your issue to continue that policy. Councilmember Kramer?
Yeah, with regard to that 20 or 12 months, is that long enough? That could last, fire, the Sulphur Fire is very qualitative, or longer for people to get to that point of being able to start rebuilding.
You're right. It was extended, I believe, with the, with the Sulphur Fire. And so we can certainly keep an eye on that and see what we think is reasonable. I mean, there were circumstances there with, you know, insurance issues, BGE payments, all that, that kind of folks were waiting longer than perhaps normal. You know, I, you never know how these things are gonna work. I'm feeling pretty good about the response we're getting and the speed of state assistance and all that. So, you know, some of these folks seem pretty motivated to get in there and get going. But, you know, if it looks like we're at the end there and, you know, are trying and need more time, we'd be happy to bring it back to the council and have you confirm the extension.
Okay, that's true.
Councilmember Sulu?
Do we have to pass another ordinance to continue this, oh, well, period? Or is it just by administrative action?
The emergency?
Yeah.
Yes, it's every 60 days. So we'll be bringing that back at the November meeting, I guess, to have an extent of emergency act. That's all.
Councilmember Kramer?
I just wanted to comment because the people told me how pleasant and nice and caring everybody was at the facility, especially Melissa, I mentioned many times about, you know. So the compassion was there, and I think that really, the people really appreciated that. They felt like people cared. They felt that they were there to help. And that's, you know, hasn't always been the case. Some of them felt like they went away without knowing anything. But several people personally came to me and just said, you know, I just gotta tell you, they were, they were really great. So I really think they did a really good job of getting better at this stuff. I think it's really, it's worth too much practice, you know, and I hope I don't. But I just really wanted to give compliments to all the people that were there, the staff and everything. They just said it was smooth. It wasn't, you know, they, they just, you know, everything went really well for them. So I had three people tell me that, which is, you know, I always say, if three people tell me something, I want to make sure that it's noticed that that happens, because that means, you know, 10 other people probably think the same thing. So you guys did a great job.
Well, it has, you know, it's been impressive for me, too. I mean, I mentioned Ms. Swanson already, but our new community fellow and specialist sitting over there in the front row. I mean, I think this was, what, her second or third week on the job? And, you know, it's not, it's not easy, you know, literally calling people and informing them that they've lost their home, right? And she did well. Miranda Logan, who has been her officer, she's a former dispatcher, so she's used to dealing with a lot of tin situations. But the two of them handled the front line with a lot of these folks who did really amazing job.
I did point out that she is to be liable, so that helped tremendously.
Councilmember Kramer?
So just following up on the cleanup. When would we have that information to share with people? I know several families that lost their homes didn't have insurance. And I also know from prior cleanups in the Sulphur Fire, oftentimes they were then hit with a bill, you know, some months later after the cleanup had taken place. If there's concern about that, are they going to be able to do their own cleanup? Or the lot, or is it going to be mandated by some state contracts?
Well, to my understanding, they would have that option. I, you know, we need to make sure and provide clarity on what the expectation is. I think with the state declaration, there should be no cost burden passed on to them. And I think that our advice to people would be to let the state clean this up.
True.
You know, they do testing of all this, and they remove soil until it's clean and handled disposal. I think it's the safest, best way to go. But I do believe that, you know, they would have an option to do this.
Yeah, I just, I have neighbors when they lost their homes in the Sulphur Fire, and then they got a huge building county that's gonna clean up, that they were not expecting.
What I would comment on, I would suggest that have the state take care of it, because once you want to rebuild afterwards, and it's not completely signed up, it's tricky to get lenders, lenders to go along with it, et cetera.
Can I go back to the evacuation plan? It sounds like PD is the authority when it comes to traffic flow in these situations. If they are tasked with higher priority items, do we have a backup plan? Are there other people that are, you know, appointed to handle stuff like that?
Well, I mean, you know, as the incident moves forward, I mean, Public Works gets called in, handles a lot of the, you know, the roadblocks and things like that as well. I mean, you know, it's, it's an emergency, so it's not always going to run smooth. And the immediate priority of law enforcement whenever this happens, there's evacuation orders to try to get people out of their houses. And, you know, we cannot forget that we're fortunate that, you know, no one lost their life in this one. So that's extraordinarily important. But, you know, we don't want people trapped in that confined area either. So, you know, later, it just, it takes a while to get people in. You know, like CHP came in and started mading some of the other intersections. I think local law enforcement or mutually partners, that intersection at 40 was made just by a service office. And, you know, I don't know if Chief Hobbs wants to make any comments on this. I mean, perhaps, you know, a law enforcement officer is better at a busy intersection like that, which is a little different than, you know, we had Public Works at the top of Damaro Extension, 18 Avenue, of course. You know, our Public Works director was mading that intersection through most of the fires.
Thank you. Councilmember Kramer?
Chief Hobbs. Chief, yeah, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to add briefly, yeah, I think generally it's best that we can have someone as a sworn peace officer at these locations doing these. And I think it's just, you know, this is, we learned some things in this one and future ones. Just learning to try and, you know, get into some of these other areas and do some of these traffic functions as, you know, as quick as we can. But the main focus, like the city manager said, is the immediate evacuation of getting people out of the actual areas that are burning at the moment. And then, you know, trying to reposition units or get units to other areas to work with that traffic. We'll definitely be looking at some options, like he mentioned, on the mapping and increasing the invisibility of some of the links and ways people can find that evacuation route to make it a little easier for people to find that information.
Thank you. Councilmember Kramer?
I guess just a comment on the cleanup, a question. Will those lots that had a number of cars, a number of vehicles, will they be part of what the state, because of this declaration, will clean up?
Yeah, the vehicles will be all, I mean, it's kind of a separate operation from the debris cleanup itself. But, yeah, those will all be. debris cleanup itself, but yeah, those will all be.
So those that say eight or twenty cars will be cleaned up as well as the ones that had one or two?
Yeah, well, I think that one area has even more than fifteen or twenty.
Yeah, well, it would be a survey. Okay, thank you.
All right, um, let's open up the public comment. If you have a comment, please come forward.
Don't touch the mic.
I can learn and yes, I shouldn't touch the mic. Uh, good evening again. I, I just, I, I love what you're talking about to help out with folks that are going to rebuild. I do have a question and I'm already looking at all the regulations and code for the county, trying to find something. Haven't found yet and I hope to continue these discussions past this meeting. But obviously not all permits come from the city. Just kind of curious if we've had conversations with special districts, the water districts, maybe air quality or anything else that would be, uh, environmental health that would be required to again, do a full rebuild of the home that requires all of those permits in the first place, uh, and if there are waivers, uh, that are available.
You would have to deal with fire, school fees, et cetera.
Yes, well, the first answer is no, we haven't had this conversation with other agencies yet. I mean, there are some fees that I think, we ran into this before, with like, um, impact fees from the school and fire department, I think are generally handled the same way as what I mentioned, as long as you have same square footage, if not artificial, you know, it's considered under that program that that impact's already happened. But if you were to add on, you have to pay for that part of it. But, um, I mean, the connections, um, are there for the, for the water agencies and the sewer stuff, so I would think those connection fees would be, um, something that would be required at this point, um, but, you know, that's, it's, we'll, we'll be following up on that, yeah.
Typically, if you rebuild, you have to, in, in the environment, you have to, it's a lot of times requires a larger meter, as I understand that they do charge for upgrading the fee and also, uh, so that's, that's why we may surprise if that's true, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Any of the comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Quirk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Flora, do you require any direction at this time? I don't believe so. All right, thank you so much. We're gonna move on to item I, City Manager Report.
Okay, um, almost all of our equipment is in hand for the sound system upgrade in council chambers, so we're expecting, uh, that to happen sometime in November. I was a part of it, but Ms. Swanson and Chief Hobbs did a review of our workers' comp claims, something that happens a few times a year, everything, and kind of see how things are going, give direction, uh, on some of the cases. I just thought that the council would like to hear that, um, apparently was raised by them that, uh, there's a noticeable reduction in our caseload on those and, um, their observation that a lot of that is a result of internal culture. I mean, it's, it's common in workers' comp field that morale issues drive workers' comp claims, so, um, I think that's something for, for all of us to be proud of. Streetlight report, I mentioned, um, it's probably been a couple of months ago, but, um, we did commission a report on our, our streetlights in the city. Uh, we know we don't have enough, um, there, uh, most of the ones in the city are essentially unmaintained by PGE. There are some that are owned and maintained by the city, but there's, uh, different ways that those can be set up and, um, you can essentially pay, um, just for the electricity to PGE or you can pay them a higher amount and then they, they maintain the light. So, um, this first phase of report, uh, I, I just got it today, I haven't really went through it yet, but we'll be bringing that back to the council to share the findings. Um, I think, uh, one of the things that in our research, uh, that actually they found was that, I don't know, maybe thirty years ago, um, the council actually took action against PGE to, um, to get ownership of the lights in the city, um, and that was granted. The city just never did it, um, and so that's something that we'll be looking into. I, I think it was different choices then, um, in the, in the late eighties sometime, but, um, anyway, we'll, we'll talk about that more. I just wanted to kind of mention it, because I know this is tough, this been, this came up over the last couple of weeks. So, you know, it's, it's, uh, it is a big issue to tackle, but they'll be, uh, looking at, uh, potential cost savings to the city if we maintain the lights over time, what the payback period is, that type of thing, and what the cost would be to add additional lights and they will hopefully prioritize, um, you know, which areas make sense to, to begin with, so. We have a hearing on the, uh, litigation on the Berth Valley Sports Complex lawsuit tomorrow, so we'll update the council on, on that. What's that?
Signal Friday offer.
Oh, no, that, that doesn't happen too often. Um, and then on Monday, there is also hearing on our request for dismissal of the Berth Valley Arrowhead Road project. So, um, that's really the main reason that we are, we were planning on doing that project this year and, um, the coordination, uh, litigation on, um, the repaving of that road. And so, um, we are, have filed a request for dismissal of the course. We'll be hearing on that on Monday, so also updating on that and hopefully get that project going soon.
Within this year or?
There's no way it's gonna start this year at this point. We're still working towards a solution on the Tree Streets Road project. Talked about that at some length at the last meeting, I think, um, and see if there's any way we're gonna be able to get this project finished this year. Golden State has a very significant amount of water main, um, that needs to be relocated out of the, uh, the, the road project. So, um, there's been some issues, you know, with other projects we mentioned, but those are moving along, um, relatively okay, um, at least as far as I know and, um, but we have, we have some issues with the Tree Street, so we'll keep you updated when we identify a solution to that. Last week, I made a trip to Palm Springs for the ICSC Western Conference, which is the International Shopping Centers Conference. Was a successful trip, uh, identified several new retail and development leads, so, um, we'll have a little summary report to provide to council on, on some high-level stuff on that, of course, to keep you updated as those connections come together. Uh, one of the missions, the planning commission is working on a number of zoning ordinance updates. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings on that now, uh, most of that's been approved already. They are, uh, putting some additional scrutiny on the, uh, sections and they're requiring curb better sidewalk improvements based on various things. So, um, we'll be talking about that again, um, at the next meeting and hopefully get some resolution there. We'll be bringing that course to the council for final approval. County Gardens, uh, Housing Development Grand Opening is next week, so, uh, hopefully most of you can attend that. Congressman Mike Thompson will be owning office hours here at City Hall tomorrow from noon to two p.m. And reminding everyone that there will be no regular city council meeting on October seventeenth due to the California Cities, Lead to Cities Conference in Long Beach. Most of you will need that's.
Thank you, City Manager. It's Councilmember Sulu.
I, I have no, uh, she's to report, no report.
Councilmember Kramer.
Uh, yes, I attended some of the various standard meetings that I do every month, Risk Protection Authority, uh, their grants, best practices, uh, meeting they have, also a clerk meeting, um, I'm going through my elders, I don't want to get anything. Yesterday, um, I attended tribal health's two-year anniversary festival along with councilmember Sulu, I forgot about that, I think.
I did, almost.
Uh, it was a great event, uh, we, uh, we, the market were presented with a, a big check. I already got the little check and then sent to the bank for, uh, ten thousand dollars, because that was a highlight for, for me, was our, uh, councilmember Sulu and I with our market hats on. Um, and then today, I also attended, uh, I zoom, um, the same debrief that, uh, Mrs. Swanson, uh, attended. Uh, I thought it went very well, there was a lot of good questions asked, brought up a lot of suggestions, how to improve it, if we ever do it again, and hope we don't, but we probably will. And just to extend your comments, there were a ton of good comments by the other participants in, um, how well the city of Clear Lake ran this conference and especially contributions that Ms. Swanson made. And I think, um, I owe you, we owe you a ton of gratitude for the way you handled it, the way you led it and the way your staff, uh, did it. I think I said something in the last meeting, but bears repeating, so thank you again for that. I have my market hat on, um, and we have, we're now, I think, right at eighty-two thousand dollars and we've raised for, for the victims, for the survivors of the Loyals Fire. And we're gonna be meeting next Friday to figure out how to vet, vet all of the folks that, that were impacted and see how we're going to disperse those funds. We hope to get over, and I think we will easily go over ninety thousand, now I'm shooting for a hundred. So, um, we can't be surprised of, of how we do, going forward on that. And that's all, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember.
What does Rury charge administrative fees for that one?
Uh, do you ask that, councilmember? Per doc? They don't charge anything. We don't pay ourselves anything. We're all volunteers, we're all rotarians. Uh, the cost of, of keeping market going is paid for by the three-member clubs, uh, Clear Lake, Lakeport and Kelseyville now, um, and those fee, and those costs are generally very low, but everything is donated, gets, uh, gets out to the victim, to the survivors, um, and we're very proud of that.
Just something that was important to share.
I just appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I have nothing to report, but I do want to wish our officers in the K9 dinner well this Saturday. They're having their dinner, I believe it's sold out, um, so buy those auction items. Unfortunately, this year we had a bit of a conflict, the Chamber of Commerce is also having our luau on the same night and, uh, we're almost sold out, uh, but looking forward to that event. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Flora, for your support in both.
Vice Mayor Orbiton.
I don't really have anything to report. The only thing I'd like to make a statement about is that getting calls now, the senior center is not open and they're going to see activity there this weekend. And I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that, that the senior center still is not open, it just happened to be the event that they did get approved to use, but we're still having some problems there. So, um, you know, I'll put out a notice, I think we'll put out a notice when we're ready to open, let everybody know. So, when everybody sees that activity, I don't want anybody to get too excited. That will, that will.
Thank you, um, so we, a couple of things coming up, we don't have a meeting in two weeks, as, uh, Mr. Flora stated, but I want to give a reminder for the soapbox derby, that's coming up, uh, in two weekends or so. Vice Mayor Orbiton, are you still, um, involved with Toretree?
Much ahead of the task.
Okay, well, I, as always, we will, we need candy, participation, costumes and, and whatever else you want to bring.
Cars, cars.
Cars, decorated candy, I think someone brought a goat one time.
Yeah, the pets, the pets go around.
A spooky, a very spooky.
So is our city manager gonna enter anything this year? Soapbox. Soapbox, pervy.
Do you think I'm entitled to build a car?
I don't know.
All right.
Might be a rotary project.
All right, well, thank you all for joining us, um, we will see you in November, I think we have a couple of special meetings, which we met, uh, we are adjourned to close session, we're closing to close session.
I still have my own. So you didn't sell it, did you? You remember.